Good morning. Call the meeting to order for the Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2018-06, March 20, 2016. Those that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
My Father, your name be mine, I give you command, I open it up on earth as it is in heaven, give us sustain and deliver it, give us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us, and there is not temptation for the best people, but I see you in my power before the world. It was written in the scriptures of life, in the United States of America, and you are a mother who extends one nation under thy, invisible, the thirteen and the others are.
First item on the agenda, entertain a motion to approve the legislative minutes from March 6, 2018. Second?
Second.
Discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motions carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from February 20, 2018 in reference to the National Folk Festival.
So moved.
Second? Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motions carried, minutes approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from February 20, 2018 in reference to stormwater management.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motions carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the closed work session minutes from December 5 in reference to a discussion of a matter directly related to negotiating strategy.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motions carried, minutes approved. Entertain a motion to approve the closed work session minutes from February 6, 2018 in reference to a personnel matter.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motions carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the closed work session minutes from February 6, 2018 consulting with legal counsel.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motions carried, minutes approved. Good morning, Ms. Hurley.
Good morning, Council President, Council Members, ladies and gentlemen. We do have a few changes to today's agenda. The open work session on the local preference purchasing in the fiscal year 2017 audit follow-up will be postponed to another meeting. Also, Dr. Singer with the Singer Group is from the Baltimore area and due to freezing rain, they are not able to attend this morning and so that will also be postponed.
Okay.
The first item on the agenda this morning is a real estate market presentation by Sarah Rine, Government and Public Affairs Director with the Coastal Association of Realtors of Maryland.
Good morning.
Good morning. Got a real big screen up there for you.
Yeah. So, this is Austin Whitehead from Whitehead Real Estate Executives and he is on our Board of Directors and he's going to be presenting most of the data for you today. And this is, these are numbers from the past five years as well as some numbers from ten years ago, so you can see where we are compared to before the recession.
Okay, alright.
Alright, guys, do you have it up good?
There we go.
Great, so all this, you should have some information in front of you. Again, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
I'm also on the Board of Directors for Coastal Realtors. So, all this information can be found on our website, coastalrealtors.org, under the advocacy and community tab. So, we're going to go to the first page here. I know we don't have much time here, so we want to just give you a brief overview and you can go into this more in detail yourselves. Some of the biggest things that we're looking at that's affecting tri-county area, first page is on the tri-county area, some of it is Wycomico and Worcester. Inventory is down and this isn't just something that's affecting our area, but it's a state and a national issue with inventory being down. However, activity is up. New contracts and homes sold is not only up for the past five years, 2013, 2017, but it's actually higher now than in 2007, before the recession. So, we think that's great that people are actually out buying again and have confidence in the market. Volume sold for the tri-county area is also up, so dollar amount of homes sold is up. We were at in 2007 and this is higher than even 2007. 2007, we were at about $860 million in real estate sold in the tri-county area. In 2017, we're now over $870 million in real estate sold. Large portion of that coming from Worcester County, but overall for our region, that's great news.
Hey, Austin.
Yes, sir.
With the inventory being down, does that increase the prices of the homes available?
Yes, so with inventory down, you are seeing that homes that are move-in ready, in good condition, that are updated, they are, it's a lot, multiple offers are happening a lot, which drives the prices up. I'm seeing across the board bidding wars happening, people getting more than list price for their homes just because of low inventory. So, that will continue to drive prices up as the inventory is low.
Good, thank you.
Question came to me also, Austin, about the inventory in Wycomico County, what did that, what was that a sign of? And I told them that I felt that it was just the fact that it used to be the largest industry in Wycomico County before the recession and this is just from an amateur perspective. I just felt that the developers, they had to find other work to do and they went in other directions and, you know, eight years later, we have a recovery. Are we finding that there's a shortage of contractors in the business? I don't know, I'm just curious from your perspective.
I do see from, and Sarah can touch on this too, I do think there's contractors out there from what I was just actually at, the Mardella, I had a gun bash fundraiser, I was talking to some small contractors there, not as many because there's no big development going on, you know, it's a lot of small piecework that they're doing. So, I think they haven't taken, although the signs show that, hey, there's activity going on, I don't think, you know, big jumps in investment on their own part as, you know, they're still worried possibly about, you know, making those big jumps into taking on big ventures. So, a more safe, you know, contractors are taking safer routes, doing smaller, smaller things.
We're seeing the larger developers, I know Ryan Holmes used to be everywhere and I don't know if there are any larger developers who are coming in and investing in the area or not from your perspective.
It's really expensive to build, as I'm sure all of you have heard, and looking at, they're facing state regulations such as the sprinkler mandate, the threat of another septic mandate, best available technology, and just in general, it's very expensive. So, doing things like you have done, repealing the impact fee, Salisbury has also implemented some incentives, it helps, but the cost is still up there and unfortunately, it's a lot higher than it is in Delaware. So, our neighbors in Delaware are seeing a lot of new development.
Right.
So, it's important to keep those incentives coming because we're short on inventory and the more construction there is, the more we can fulfill that need.
Yeah, we understand it is hard, but at the same time, when you have your neighbors that are so close that have cheaper and we can't really get around it as far as taxes, but retirement income taxes, there's no state income on retirement, there's all these things that are making it more popular for Delaware to build. So, we're seeing a lot of development in the Delaware area. So, as many incentives that can be brought to our builders would make it more financially feasible for them. I have seen with numbers as tight, I have heard from contractors doing more flips just because they can make just as much money on buying something and fixing it up rather than going out and constructing new.
Joe, is there a question?
No, I was just going to relate to something. I was talking to a couple that just relocated to Wycomico County from New Jersey and they looked at Delaware and they looked at Wycomico County and while taxes and all were less, you know, even income taxes and property taxes, they did come to Wycomico because of slower pace. They said east from Sussex County, it's getting really busy, you know, traffic and things like that, so we still have that to offer.
No, I'm still, I'm born and raised in Wycomico, I still push, you know, Wycomico and the eastern shore of Maryland real estate, just you asked specifically, what are some of the things that I'm seeing and being straightforward right now?
You're absolutely right, you know, if it's so cheap to build over there, then they're going to have a lot of construction, a lot more people, more congestion, so, yeah.
Going on to the next page, Wycomico County more specifically, again, we're seeing similar trends to tri-county area. The only other difference is the volume sold, still moving up, but not more volume than the 2007 era, but low inventory is something that's impacting us, but contracts are up, even contracts in homes sold is higher than in the 2007, so which is great, the confidence in the market, not only in the tri-county, but also Wycomico County specifically. Prices are moving up since the 2013 era, we have an average sale price of about $161,000 in Wycomico County, but this is definitely down from 2007, about a 26% decrease. Going on to the next page, this is 2018 county statistics up to March 9, 2018, so you have as of March 9, 2018 versus the beginning of the year, the first two months. And this has more, the first pages that we saw, the first two pages, had residential property only, this includes your farms, commercial property and the like. Currently, there are 1,339 active listings, so that includes everything, including rental property listed on the MLS. Again, this is just information that is put on the MLS for sale by owner, wouldn't not be included. 302 new listings for 2018, to date, 190 properties sold in the first two months of 2018 and you're seeing different prices in there due to rentals and things of that nature. Next, we're going to look at Salisbury, the city of Salisbury, their market, again, active listings down, but again, new contracts, homes sold is up and again, higher than in 2007 before the recession. Average sale price is a little bit higher than the county at $163,000, so $2,000 higher and volume has increased steadily, volume sold. Last, we have Fruitland, city of Fruitland Market, again, active listings down in comparison to 2017.
Over the past five years?
Yeah, yeah, Fruitland listings are up in comparison to 2013, but we're seeing a little bit of an up and down in the prices floating. So, they have, 2017, they had an average sale price of 140,000, which is lower than everywhere else that we talked about, so that is drawing some attention to buyers, the sale price is there and especially for the younger individuals and families. I know you wanted to keep it short, but, so I tried to run through this pretty quickly for you guys. You can definitely go into more detail into this, just to start, or go on to our website to find more information.
We also have in your book, just a page that has the Coastal Association of Realtors' public policy statement, just, it has some information about our association and our advocacy and community outreach efforts that are focused. And then, I put in there a really nice graphic from the State Association of Realtors, 10 facts about the role of real estate in Maryland economy and how important it is to the economic health of the state. Does anybody have any more questions?
Questions? We appreciate you coming in and sharing the information with us. We do follow your emails and we do understand how often you are going to Annapolis and how often you're trying to address those concerns. Your advocacy for the real estate market is very valuable to us, it is a major industry in Wycomico County and everything you're doing is benefiting Wycomico County and eastern shores whole. So, we really do appreciate that and please keep sending us the information that you have as far as any adjustments you think that we can do on a county level to possibly help the industry, because that isn't, as I said, that's very important to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Next on the agenda, we have an update from the Natural Resource Conservation Advisory Committee, we have Dr. Judith Stripling here.
Entertain a motion-
I don't know if this doctor is in your briefing package, Hallie Wilson and I were both signed on about this last week.
Hope you're feeling better.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
If you could, and just let Robert know who you are and your title, etc., that'd be great. On the mic, so that people can hear you now, thanks. We know who you are too.
I'm Judith Stripling, I'm the Chair of the Wycomico County Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Hall is the representative from the Wycomico County Council to this committee and in our discussions recently, we realized that we really haven't communicated directly with the entire council and we thought it might be giving all of our guests a little more understanding of what it is we're up to in this group. So, these are the members of the committee right now. This committee was established as a standing committee for the county in 2009 and there was specific representation and you can see the different representatives of those particular areas that were designated to be included on the committee. I personally think this is a terrific group with some incredible knowledge and expertise and experience and I feel as though we've accomplished a lot and I just wanted to share some of this with you today. So, here's a little outline of what, you know, some of the highlights of what we've been up to in 2017 and I'll go through each of these as briefly as I can, but please, you know, let me know if you'd like me to fill in more information. First of all, the Pirate's Morph property has been, you know, finally coming into development and, you know, planning is well underway now. Our committee was the first to actually address this proposal to go ahead and, you know, facilitate work on developing a park and initially, we developed a plan for the forested section that we felt addressed citizen concerns and the needs of the county as well as, you know, looking at potential for a really interesting environmental, environmentally approached logging called variable density thinning. And so, at the beginning of 2017, that proposal went out for bids and there was no response. So, the logging on that section has not happened.
Why was there no response?
I don't know. I think partly because, from what Matt Hurd, our forester, explains to me is that the loggers are really busy, they're not really that interested in something that has had some controversy associated with it in the past, but we're still hoping that we'll find someone that wants to do this project because it's a really exciting project and I can give you more details.
When are the bids going out again?
I'm sorry?
Are bids going out again and when?
They were, it was, it went out twice and I don't know if there's planning to release it another time or not. I mean, I think Mr. Culver's attention at least has turned to the riverside of the property, you know, more in terms of the development of the park. One of the findings that we came up with was that that wooded section really isn't suitable for actual active recreation, it's, it would be great as an educational tool, some passive recreation, but it's very wet much of the year, it's also very buggy the rest of the year, you know, ticks and tiggers and such, so if it's going to be used, it's going to be used in a limited fashion anyway. Also, it's very difficult to establish parking on that side of the road because of its low nature. So, then we took, we toured the other side with Mr. Culver and Bosco Subramaniam from MD, or VNR, the Living Shorelines consultant, and a number of other folks came out with us and looked at that. And then, since then, that's been passed on to a working group that was established by Steve Miller, which I'm also on and so is Matt Hurd and Chris McCade, two of our members. So, we've developed a draft plan and that's been submitted, so I'm excited about that. A project that we've been working on for a number of years finally came to fruition this year and this is the expansion of the Quantico Creek Rural Legacy Area. You can see the original area in green there and the expansion area in pink and one of the real priorities for this was to extend it up into areas over the Paleo Channel. What this expansion does is provide more opportunities for property owners, more options for conservation. It doesn't mandate anything, it doesn't commit anyone to anything, but it simply gives them the opportunity to tap into a whole other set of funding for conservation. And we have several very excited willing landowners around Heatherman, for example. To date, the whole Quantico Creek Rural Legacy Area has placed 4,000 acres under conservation and we're excited about both the potential for helping to protect the Paleo Channel and also for allowing farmers to retain their land and farmland economically and thereby support this incredibly important industry in the county, which is farming. So, this has, I think, been a really successful project. It was unanimously approved by the Board of Public Works on October 4th and so the planning offices have been looking for, you know, looking for willing landowners. The Lower Shore Land Trust worked really closely with us on this, developing this I don't have a slide for the next item, which was that we reviewed the draft plan, preservation, parks and recreation plan and made substantive comments on that plan specifically, chapters three, six and seven. I should say, our committee actually came out of an older committee called the Green Infrastructure Committee and if you look at the LCPRP, there's a substantial portion of that devoted to green infrastructure, the natural resources of the county and that's what we're tasked with trying to, you know, advise on ways to conserve that green infrastructure. In 2013, the city of Salisbury contracted or received actually the results of a contract to review the protection of the Paleo Channel and there were a number of very specific recommendations in that document and to our knowledge, there had not really been any progress on that since then. So, we took a look at some of those recommendations and developed a set of our own recommendations on how to get those recommendations implemented. We met with Amanda Pollock and Jack Lennox and discussed how this could go forward, spent quite a bit of time reviewing those. We came up with a number of projects that we as a committee could facilitate and we're planning to do that as well. So, this is just a summary of some of our recommendations and discussion points. And essentially, what we're trying to do is educate people about the Paleo Channel, how critical it is, it's the main source of drinking water in the city of Salisbury and much of Wycomico County, and it is also not a completely confined aquifer, that means that it is very subject to contamination, which I'm going to also address a little bit later on in another topic. So, we're excited about, you know, trying to get this moving forward. One of the key issues here is that there are substantial differences between the city of Salisbury's ordinances regarding the Paleo Channel and the counties. The counties are far more detailed, far more effective in my estimation, much more clear and comprehensive. And so, we're working with the city and the county to see if we can't resolve those differences, which was one of the main recommendations of this consultant firm that the city contracted. And for the health of the citizens, I think this is a real priority.
Is there a map that specifically shows where the parts of the Paleo Channel are?
Yes, absolutely.
Are easily impacted as opposed to those that are closed?
I'm sorry, that are-
I say, I use the term closed because you had said, I think, that they're open.
It's not, it's a partially confined aquifer, so there is, what this consultant's work addressed was that what they call the time of travel, how long would it take for contaminants to actually reach that water source? And it's not a, not a very lengthy amount of time. You know, we always hear that groundwater is protected by a layer of clay, which basically is impermeable, the travel of water through that clay is on the order of tens of thousands of years and that is not the case for the Paleo Channel. We're talking about 10 years time of travel from some parts of the landscape to the water source itself.
Well, I know that what's come across our desk before is there have been discussions about, well, it's over the Paleo Channel and yet the, it's also been noted that, you know, a lot of what's on North Route 13 is over the Paleo Channel and, you know, so they're sort of using that comparison as if it's, you know, it's not a major threat. So, I think it'd be nice to know what distinguishes-
Yeah, before the, the understanding of this vulnerability was really there, and I think 2013 is when this really got raised by, by Advanced Land and Water, who did the consulting. Before then, you know, there was willy-nilly development over the Paleo Channel, but Wycomico County's ordinance, if you read that carefully, I mean, it essentially says there are very few things that you can do over the Paleo Channel. And one of the key things that I think we need to be thinking about is whenever there's redevelopment, make sure that we're moving back from the threats rather than going forward. And that's the case for that development up there near Putt Boys and the other side there, I forget exactly what it is, but there was a new redevelopment there that actually was going to make a big difference in the vulnerability. Yes, I have that map a little bit later on, so if you don't mind, I'll, I'll talk about that soon here. Okay, so, and also, part of what we did was to meet with the Natural Resources Conservation Service, NRCAS, to talk to them about how we could work together and as a result of that meeting and one of our members attending their equip funding meeting, farmers over the Paleo Channel are now going to be given priority in equip funding for federal cost share programs. You know, so keeping nutrients out of that water source is one key priority and equip will help with that, with best management practices and things of that sort, so we're excited about that. But we have a number of other projects that we're going to try to implement as well. The next item that we're really excited about and, but I have to say, you know, it's kind of been a little bit of a jerky start, is our invasive species program. We started talking about this last year and by the first of this year, we already had, you know, a program in place, we had met with the tri-county council, gotten their buy-in as well as some other partners for supporting this and we've now gone to the four lower shore counties and requested financial support. So, I believe that Mr. Culver put $25,000 in this year's budget as a request to help kick this off. What we're looking for is, you know, essentially implementation funding for a few years to get this moving and then hopefully it will become self-sustaining. The idea is, and this is for plant species, I have to make clear, unfortunately, we don't have, you know, animal species, especially insects is another, a whole other area, but we're looking at invasion of non-native species and Matt Hurd, who's our forester, is keenly aware of this, as are all farmers, you know, that this is a real problem everywhere, but Wycomico County is seeing everything from mild-meditate to kudzu of all things, which we kind of thought was a southern species, but no, it's here. So, we're looking at trying to establish a program that will have a full-time staff person to manage educating the public, identifying where these species are and then working to eradicate them. So, this is our flow chart of how we will proceed and again, I won't go through all the details of this, but we think this is a pretty exciting program and Mr. Hall's been very involved- And Mr. Hall's been very involved in this along the way. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to pull together this position of someone who can actually manage it. We met with the, the state DNR's invasive species coordinator, Curry Kaid, who just retired, but she was really excited that, that we were looking at this. And on a four-county basis, because, you know, these, these species do not pay attention to county boundaries, and it really needs a, a whole regional approach to, if we're gonna be successful. We've also had, you know, a number of other initiatives. We've talked with county board of education representatives about tree plantings. We did a tree planting a number of years ago, and, and we're still interested in trying to, you know, build our green infrastructure a little bit more that way. We also had a discussion about options for increasing the rate of recycling in the county, you know, something that I think is a little bit tenuous right now with the, the market for recyclables being so poor, but still a priority for conserving landfill space, another part of, you know, conserving our natural resources. And then finally, so this gets us back to the Paleo Channel. We had initially had the proposal for the land donation of the Connolly Mill property. I'm sure you all know what that is. And brought to us, we were asked, you know, to weigh in on whether that was a good idea. And, and, you know, at the face, on the face of it, it did look like a wonderful opportunity for recreation and natural resource conservation, to have the county manage this property. And then, of course, what happened was we discovered this not-so-pretty picture of contamination on that site. So we have shifted really from looking at this as a recreational opportunity, though that may unfold in the future, to looking at what needs to be done now. And we're quite concerned about the threat, again, to the Paleo Channel. So here is one illustration of that sort of pale blue river-looking thing. That's the Paleo Channel. And the property in question, I don't think I have a pointer here. Is that? No, okay. But, but the property in question, you can see that red outline is part of it. And, and you can see the, where there was essentially a sand and gravel operation and so on. So it definitely, part of the property absolutely contacts the Paleo Channel there. And in fact, it, if you look at the topographic map, you see the flow. This is, this is the, the low, the upper and then the lower portions of the site. And you can see in the lower portion of the site, if you understand topographic maps, the groundwater flow is downhill towards the wellheads of the Paleo Channel up there in, in the Mayoral Mill site. So this is a big concern to us. This is a figure, and, and Mr. Cannon, this is what I was, you know, I think you were probably asking about it.
Right.
Is, do we have a map of the Paleo Channel? Here is a map of the kind of priority contact regions of the Paleo Channel with zones that, that Advanced Land and Water identified based on time of travel. So essentially, how long does it take water, you know, a contaminant that's delivered to the surface of the ground to reach that, that aquifer in, when it's, when it's, contacts the ground in different parts of the overlying area? And zone one is the hot, is the shortest time of travel, and that's, and that's approximately 10 years.
Which is right in the center.
Yeah, you can, you can see it, like, that kind of circular area there. And the property in question, that, that little V-shaped notch thing that comes down is, is right there. So, you know, we, we have some serious concerns about that. And, and we understand that further testing is gonna be expensive. And so we're looking into some options for how that might proceed. But we are, we are putting together recommendations. So you'll probably hear, be hearing from our committee about that. Again, we are simply an advisory committee. So we look at these issues, we try to put our best, you know, expertise at work in evaluating them, and then, you know, we, we pass that along to the municipalities and the government agencies.
In your PowerPoint, with the different metals and contaminants here, you didn't address the Derby Fields that, that are there as far as buildings being buried. And the Hines Association, they dug up, you know, stuff from 30 foot down, and the different materials and stuff where things were buried there. I see you didn't identify that in your PowerPoint.
I'm sorry, I didn't identify the materials that they had, that they had dug up?
Right. You didn't identify that there were materials there in, in your PowerPoint.
Oh, no, I, I'm not trying to do a comprehensive summary of what they did, but I'm just, I, I just-
There's more to it than what you've got.
Absolutely, absolutely. There, and, and the fact is, there's a lot more investigation that needs to be done, because no one's really sure, right, what's happened there. No one's sure, no one has any idea where this came from. But these highlighted yellow, whoops.
I jinxed it.
The highlighted yellow numbers are ones that are above the MDA actionable limits, yes. Okay, so, I'm sorry, I went on a little long, but any questions about that?
That's great. Yeah, if you could send us the PDF or the PowerPoint, that'd be great.
Sure.
I don't know if it's PDF or PowerPoint, whichever, that'd be great. Any other questions? Appreciate the update.
Okay, the next item for business is Resolution Number 24-2018, to authorize the county to acquire an easement on 396.98 acres, more or less, within the Quantico Creek Royal Legacy Area from Michael B. Phillips, the property being located on Maryland 349, southwest of Quantico, and designate as Tax Map 35, parcel numbers 20 and 56, and Tax Map Number 45, parcel number 40. Council had a work session on this easement at its last meeting. We have Mr. Frank McKenzie here, if there are any questions.
Sure. Our team has motioned to approve Resolution 24-2018, summary. Second?
Second.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. First of all, thank you all for hearing our request for the acquisition of, of an easement on the Quantico Creek Rural Legacy Area. As Judith mentioned earlier, you know, part of this Rural Legacy Area was expanded just recently, last year, where we overdoubled the size of a Rural Legacy Area. But what we have before you today is a request to purchase an individual easement on a piece of property along Maryland Route 349. This property is, it's a wooded and agriculturally-used site. There is a home site on the property, and it's approximately 396 acres. Since the inception of the Rural Legacy Program, Wycomico County has received over $8 million, you know, to protect lands in a Rural Legacy Area. Right now, we have approximately $2 million that we're looking to spend and allocate for different projects. This is one of them. We have two more that are also in the pipeline. For this one, this property, as I mentioned, is over 396 acres. A lot of this property is fronts on the Quantico Creek area. There's a significant portion of property that's in forestry use, 275 acres. There's 113 acres untilable land. This easement will also create 100-foot buffers along the streams and along the river. Previously, some of the concerns that the council has had is, is, you know, when a property is, in this case, it's bisected by our existing Rural Legacy Boundary Area. It's, it's been the practice across the state that if a property, the boundaries of the property extend over the, the boundary, then that whole thing can be considered as part of, you know, something can be acquired. And in this case, you know, there's this significant portion that's just south of our Rural Legacy Area. But the state of Maryland recognizes that, you know, if, if the soils are good, if this is a good piece of property to acquire, they recommend that we proceed with it, and the, the boundary of the Rural Legacy Area will be adjusted to accommodate this property. And this is approximately the fourth time that we've had this. It appears that a lot of properties along the perimeter may own on both sides of particular road. And so it was a decision to go ahead and, and protect all of that land. Another concern the council's always had is, you know, are we protecting something that would protect itself due to natural features of the property? You know, in other words, will it perk? Is it zoned properly? This property is zoned agricultural rural, and we ran through a, a development analysis to determine how many lots could be acquired on that property. And working with our professionals, you know, in the planning office, we determined that 20 lots would be available for construction on this property. So the second part of this, are the soils good enough to handle that? So we worked with the Health Department, and they did a soils analysis and determined that the soils of the property could handle up to 50 development units. So the soils are at far capacity to handle what development could occur with, you know, within this site.
Frank, excuse me, are you talking about the, the entire length of the property or just one, one portion of it? Which portion of it would be?
The, the portion on the north side of the 349 are where most of the good soils are. There's an area just south of it where there are some good perccable soils, but primarily on the north side of the property.
Because I know we, we've mentioned before in the work session that the, the property on the south side in Annika Road, it just seemed to me, I was very curious that we were spending these monies, which are somewhat hard to come by, for a property that is, for the most part, woodlands. And, and what I, I didn't realize from previous, I guess, the previous discussion we had had, that that particular section is, you're saying it's outside of the, it's outside of the Rural Legacy Area? I did understand what you said earlier, but this, this whole section is completely outside of the Rural Legacy Area?
Yeah, there's, there's a major forest area, you know, south of our existing Rural Legacy Area. Part of what the, the easement will do is, you know, with the Forest Conservation Program, there is an allowance that you can convert forest land to ag land. What this will do is ensure that this land always stays in forest land. So you can't convert this to ag land or any other use other than forest. So that will also be a good situation for bird habitat, for, if development to work to occur, adjacent properties, any, this, these soils would help filter any runoff from neighboring properties.
Frank, I think I just read the Health Department said that you could put 50 dwellings there, and I think your allowance was 20. Who's gonna be building on this?
Nobody. What we're doing, the whole purpose of this exercise is to prevent any development from occurring on this property. Now, there is an allowance for them to build a, one single home and an accessory home, like a tenant, for the site if they need somebody to help, you know, farm the property. But it will not be subdivided further.
How much of this nearly 400 acres will be taken off the tax rolls?
Well, it's not taken off the tax rolls. It will still be, continue to be taxed at the current agricultural rate. It's just it cannot be converted to something that would have a higher return.
So the current owner will still have possession?
They'll still own the property, they'll still pay taxes on it. They'll still pay whatever they've been paying.
I, I was asked that, and I didn't have an answer at the time. Frank, what priority level was this property before this came about?
I believe this was a priority one. Now, we've been working with the Phillips almost since the inception of the Rural Legacy Program. And I think Mr. Lennox, when he discussed this before, you know, there was an extended family with a lot of Phillips properties who were interested. But then, I guess, they had to kind of sort out, you know, which properties, you know, wanted to be involved in this. And so this is really the first of the Phillips family to come through this program.
So the, this section is number 206, which is again the south section? And then the north section is 20. The south section of 206, I, I don't know if that, again, I don't see how that's a, would, would be a top priority, a number one priority, and the size of that, there's an awful lot of other priority one areas out there. And I'm wondering what the best use of the dollars might be. I, I literally have no problem with the section that's inside the designated area. It's just always been that south section that's been a problem to me.
Well, it is true that, you know, the better soils are on the north side of this. But when we looked at it and discovered that, you know, the, the property was on both sides, you know, we started looking at, should we protect the whole thing? Now, along the south side of 349, there are other lands that are in different protective easements. And this helps close, you know, a gap of areas to have a larger gap, a larger area of concentrated areas that are protected from future development.
There's other protected areas on that south side?
There are some on the south side, yes. There's some Chesapeake properties owned by the state of Maryland. There's, I think there's a mouth easement in the vicinity. Now, when we did our initial study, you know, to determine, you know, priority one, priority two, those were actually, you know, within our Rural Legacy Boundaries. So, you know, this, this property, you know, is negotiated with a landowner. The value of the property where it's wooded would probably have a little less value, you know, when, when they're trying to determine what the appraisal value of these would be as far as the appraisals by certified appraisers. Now, forest land that's being protected, the county also participates in what they call an easement evaluation system. And that's where you look at environmental features, and they can get additional credit or points for properties that, in this case, contain forest land. The goal is to protect ag and forest land and habitat areas in the future from development.
You say it could never be developed. Isn't there a provision in this that where they could buy this back out? I know in most state, state programs, you know, you can buy your way back out of something.
Yeah, I, I've heard of people trying to do that. The council would have, you know, the right to, they'd have to request it first from the local jurisdiction, and then go to the Rural Legacy Board. Then you have to pay back the money that was paid to the individual, as well as, you know, if there's new value to the land, it'd be, could be a different amount. But from what I understand, once this is entered into, this is a permanent protection measure. And, you know, from what I hear from my folks across the state, Rural Legacy easements have never been purchased back from, from the, from the program.
Matt?
Just looking at the map, I don't think that we can actually separate the north side and the south side because the parcel number 20, so it's Tax Map 35, parcel 2056, and then Tax Map 45, parcel number 40. Parcel number 20 actually is on both sides of the road.
I see that, I see that from here, yeah. I see what you're saying.
So in these programs, you can't do half a parcel. I know whenever we've applied for the mouth program, we have to do the full parcel at one time. You can't separate. So if we're gonna do that north side of the road, we would have to do that, at least that southern part, which is a majority of it anyway.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because I was thinking that the road was divided, the parcel, sure. So the, the parcel that's numbered as 20, you know, goes into the south end. The parcel 206 doesn't appear to go to the north end whatsoever.
Right.
And parcel 21, you know, I'd say 95% of that is also in the south side of there.
Right.
So I was just looking, and I can understand, I mean, you make a great point, 20, yeah, no problem. That has to be, that, that certainly is. But I was wondering if you took 21 and 206, and whatever payments are being made for those properties, maybe that's something you could address with these other parcels. And the priority ones such as, you're seeing 22, 24, 25, 26, 19, which are all on both sides of 20, are those not being addressed and not being purchased? Is there another reason for that, or is it because of funding, or is it because of the owners?
Now, which parcels are you speaking of?
The parcels on both sides of 20 along the creek itself.
Up on the north side.
Oh, on the north side. Okay, those are not owned by Mr. Phillips.
I understand. Well, what my question was, was are those owners that are also looking to, to get into this program?
We have contacted different owners, you know, along the creek and throughout the Rural Legacy Area. And some properties, you know, are too small. We don't want to purchase anything less than 50 acres. And then some people just choose not to participate, you know, at this time. So I can't speak as to, you know, the owner of parcel 20- So, I can't speak as to, you know, the owner of parcel twenty-one.
Well, twenty-one appears to be
That's a good size.
The same owner. I was just, I was just looking at, you know, nineteen and twenty-two and twenty-four and twenty-five. What the map really does not tell, tell us is whether these are properties that are out there for owners who are waiting to buy them or whether they actually could be the first priority for the next fifty years and it's never going to make a difference because nobody else is doing it with it.
Well, we have, over the years, you know, done outreach to different folks throughout the rural legacy area. And basically, if someone comes to us and says they're interested in participating, then we look at the map, say, okay, is this a priority one? So, in this case, if parcel twenty-one has not shown any interest and we have reached out to them and they said, not this time, then it's just something we haven't pursued. Now, in the future, if they change their mind, then it's something we can entertain. But it's a strictly voluntary program and it is a limited amount of money. But we do, you know, we do have partners in this and a partner of the Navy, you know, will fund up to half the cost of the easement acquisition in areas that fall under their flight path. So, you know, if this was something we wanted to consider, we'd also run this by the Navy and see if they would be interested in participating in this.
Well, the Navy is, I thought the Navy was participating in this.
They are, they are, but additional, if you say, look at twenty-one, you know, we can reach out to them and see, you know, if anything has changed, you know, with their status. And I'm not even sure that
I think twenty-one is the one that we're looking at today, part of what we're looking at today.
No.
I don't think so.
It's not, it's not part of this acquisition at all. If we're looking at the same.
Twenty fifty-six.
This is twenty-one here.
Are you looking at the one that's colored red?
Yes.
So, those are just numbers of properties within, those don't reference the actual parcel number? It just happens that number twenty is the same as number twenty.
Oh, yeah, those
Yeah, it says proposed acquisition. I thought that was.
Okay, so
Okay, so I'm going to, okay, so I'm looking at twenty. Okay, I see what, okay.
Yeah, see, our next one is sixty-six.
Well, the map where it distinguishes blue.
Yep.
That looks as if the property lines are, well, no, twenty does go down. I see where twenty goes, yeah. So, actually, the only additional areas outside of the twenty is the fifty-six and the forty.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I see what map you're looking at. So, what we were proposing to do last year, it's number nineteen on this map. And while that was a priority one, we had not proposed, you know, to purchase that within this funding cycle. But there are other ones you can see here that are in the green, you know, that maybe too small or that the owners have decided they do not want to participate. Now, there's another one on the north side of creek, you see number eighty-five. That's another one that we are also looking at for an easement.
Right, and that's what I thought Councilman Cannon was talking about, it said proposed and I thought that was for today as well.
No.
That's in the future.
This was part of the application that went to the State of Maryland where we are, you know, soliciting funds for, you know, easement acquisition for the year. And so, at this time, you know, we also requested acquisition over there on the east side up near Haverhill. That was not, that's not part of what we're asking you to consider today.
That one was two thousand and sixteen.
It was FY seventeen when we were discussing whether we wanted to acquire this property. Now, this individual has, the number fifty-one on that map has indicated they are interested in participating. But today, you know, we haven't reached out to them to further these negotiations. So, today, we're just talking about these ones owned by Mr. Phillips.
And that lot twenty isn't subdivided, north and south?
Lot twenty is
Parcel.
The map twenty, on this map, is located, it's split by the road, but it's one parcel of land. And so, that's why we are looking at that.
I only ask because it appears like it's subdivided on the next map, the map that Matt Holloway was talking about. John, I went through this all back with some property that had to be put into forest easement, set aside. And interestingly, to find out, roads don't, don't separate courses.
Yeah, this does, this looks like there is a separation though with the black dots on this map.
Yeah. I mean, a farm can be contiguous on either side of the road.
Well, I guess in this case, it was just, you know, the way that the boundary was represented with those dash lines. Those dash lines do not indicate that it's, you know, a subdivided property.
Right.
It just indicates that that's the boundary of that piece on the south side of the road and on the north side.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion.
I've answered all my questions. Any other questions? Okay.
So, what we're requesting, you know, is if the council is in support of this resolution to acquire it, that you give your concurrence and then we will forward this information on to, up to Department of Natural Resources. And we still have to go through, I think, they're still reviewing the easement at state level. Department of Navy is reviewing the easement. And Board of Public Works still gets final approval.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four two thousand and eighteen.
Sub moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you, Frank.
Sorry for the confusion on maps there.
It was all my fault. Thanks.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Resolution number twenty-five two thousand and eighteen, confirming the appointment of Jason Simmons, MSW LC SW dash C, to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board. This board reviews public guardianship cases every six months and makes recommendations to the court to either continue, modify, or terminate guardianship.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five two thousand and eighteen.
Sub moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution twenty-five two thousand and eighteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
Good morning, Mr. Roser.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. I call your attention to Resolution twenty-six two thousand and eighteen, Sheriff's Office Civil Processing Payments Audit.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-six two thousand and eighteen. Second.
Second.
Discussion?
If I may. Associates at the Sheriff's Office asked the auditors to look at their civil processing payments program. The objective of the process was to weigh in on internal controls involving payments. The Sheriff's Office uses a program called Record Management Software, or RMS, to track civil processing payments and deliveries along with numerous other functions. The auditors worked with the Sheriff's IT personnel and made some suggestions to enhance the process. We recommended some tightening of the process and development of a consistent approach for data entry. And it's the auditor's opinion that the Sheriff's Office personnel should be commended for their willingness to proactively seek improvements. And I'll be happy to address any questions you may have.
Okay. Any discussion on the part of, for Mr. Roser? I think that is good. I mean, that's ninety percent of it, Mr. Roser, if you're, everyone's addressing the issue and they're doing everything they can as far as trying to make the improvements.
Yes, sir.
It was, I think you did point out some very serious matters that do need to be looked at twice.
What we found was that they need, we think, in the auditor's opinion, they need to take a look at their consistency in data entry, some of those things. The scope of this operation was not huge. That is, we're not talking about a huge amount of money here.
Right.
But the Sheriff's folks were interested in looking at their process in order to improve efficiency and effectiveness and we made some recommendations to that end and we are confident that they'll be able to implement what they need to do to accomplish the goals.
Any questions from council? All those in favor of Resolution twenty-six two thousand and eighteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roser. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any public comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please, state your name and your county of residency and your concerns. Thank you.
First, give an honor to God for being able to be here. To President Cannon, council members, and all those of them, good morning. My name is Mary Ashanti. I live in Wycomico County. I'm president of Wycomico County NAACP. My comments will mostly be about the budget on, with the understanding that March twenty-second, there'll be a budget hearing and Wycomico County NAACP will have a meeting that night. So, I won't be present. My first topic is education. We were present when the, when this document was presented to the community. We applaud the superintendent for this, and the Board of Education for this document. We support universal pre-K for all students and that requires adequate funding for that to happen. We have seen the results on the effect of children that have not had a pre-K. They end up in the first grade unable to, to really be successful. So, we strongly support funding for universal pre-K. The next is the quality teachers. We believe that if you want a quality professional, you need to offer them, I use the word quality, paycheck. So, they need to have more than the cost of living wages. If we want professionals, we must pay them a professional salary. Wycomico County Public Schools must be able to meet students' emotional behavior needs. Therefore, there needs to be adequate placement. They need to have enough social workers available in these schools and psychologists to deal with the problem. I think from what I can see over the years, we have teachers doing things that social workers and psychologists should be doing. Let the teacher teach and put psychologists and social workers in place so that they'll, they can deal with the emotional and behavior problems that we're seeing today in schools. So, that's very important for that to be done. The next is public safety. We believe rehabilitation should be the big, the biggest part of what happens when a person is in Wycomico County Detention Center. For that to happen, the detention center must be, have adequate funding for that to happen. It costs more when a person leave the detention center and return. It costs taxpayers more money. So, it's better to, increases the safety issue. So, it's better to have rehabilitation while there, at the detention center. Also, mental health and addiction counseling needs to be available. Over the years, and I have one example that I saw over the years, a young man had been in the detention center off and on, off and on. And at the particular time that he was there, apparently, there were some great additional counselors. We communicated with them. And the end result is this young man came back in society, developed a business, and he's been out ever since. So, with mental health and addiction counseling available and also proper medical help while people are there, we think that it will, the outcome will be greater. The other thing that concerns us is funding for salaries of correctional officers. I've heard that throughout the country, really, that there's a problem, and throughout Maryland, that there's a problem with correctional officers being underpaid, overworked, having to do long hours of overtime because there's not enough staff. Those kind of conditions create a safety issue, create a safety issue for the inmates and it creates a safety issue for the correctional officers. So, we believe that if there is sufficient pay, sufficient funding available for hiring new officers, that will correct that problem. And lastly, we hope that you will spend the taxpayers' money with logical sense. We hope that you will weigh benefit versus risk. And we hope that you ask the question, how will it help the community? And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bruce DeShawn. I would suggest that you have a representative there and to maybe read your statement if you have that chance. Any other public comments? Council comments?
Yes, I think it was Monday, Council President Cannon and I, I can't remember who else attended, pre-K visit at the WELC and we were able to see what's going on there. My kids were in pre-K sixteen years ago, not that long ago. They're only sixteen. But anyway, we know the value of this and we know that the Board of Ed is working on this and they are meeting with state reps and they're hoping the state will be able to fund some. So, we do know in the future that the county's going to have to step up to the plate at some point. So, we are hoping that it's going to be successful. Saturday night, the Wycomico County Farm Bureau had their banquet. Most of the council members were able to attend and it was a good showing. It was good to see the farmers representing their way of life and we thank them for that. Tomorrow, supposed to be the opening day ceremonies for the Henry Parker Athletic Complex, the Wycomico County Schools, supposed to have games out there. Don't know if that's going to happen with this weather outlook at this time. So, if it's going to happen, I'll be there. This Saturday, Fruitland is going to have their Easter Parade and I'll be attending that and I think Haverhill's going to have one as well. Hope everybody stays safe in this weather.
Any other council comments? Mr. Bromley, did you have a public comment to make?
Yeah.
We'll fit you in.
For somebody to get in and she didn't do it.
The ones that don't know, David Bromley, I've lived in Wycomico County my whole life. You know, I was hoping some school board people would be here, hear some of this. But to go with what she was saying about our teachers, one of the problems is our teachers aren't supported. They send kids to the class office and the office sends them back because it's all statistics. But I want to get back on the part of what went in to Pittsfield a couple of weeks ago that was pretty much kind of covered up. A lot of people were upset and everything, they weren't notified what was going on. The biggest, the biggest thing that agitated people was after the incident, the threat, the school shooting, the child was in the school the next morning. He might not have attended the classroom, but he was in the building. And there were things that were sent out that says that he wasn't there and the parents were making more issues over it than they should have. But there's a lot of things that's not being done the right way. You've heard of these things today, we're buying land to protect the land. Well, if we're not going to protect our kids, who are we protecting the land for? You know, we're spending a lot of money on that and we can't do it. I don't know if you know it or not, there was another shooting today in Great Mills, Southern Maryland, St. Mary's County. It just happened this morning. And everybody goes on about the guns, what, there was a school the other week. There was a school the other week, a kid went in there and stabbed, I think, 21 people. So, it's not just the guns, but we're not dealing with the issues. And what consequences, when these kids make these threats, whether they're kind of credible or non-credible, what are we doing with them? If we're not doing, if they're not a severe enough punishment, they're going to keep making threats, one way or the other. I don't believe, you know, this goes. And I'm kind of concerned that WBOC, it seems like anywhere else there's an incident like that, they got a lot of coverage over it. Now, it might not be 100% fault because they might be getting the information to squash it. So, that's pretty much a lot of what I got to say, except that, you know, before now, the Board has never really had to answer to anybody. But thank God, we're going to start electing Board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bromley. Mr. Bromley, we are going to have a work session as soon as we adjourn the legislative session. And Superintendent is here, Representative from the Sheriff's Department is here, and John Palmer from Board of Education is also here.
I'll be glad to listen.
Great, thank you for your comments.
Is there a chance to still speak?
Later.
No, not during the work session. You can, yeah, if you'd like to talk now, sure. We've opened the whole floor up here. Failed to recognize President Jack Heath from the Salisbury City Council. Jack, sorry we didn't recognize you earlier. Thanks.
Good morning. For those of you that do not know me, my name is Tanya Laird Lewis. I'm the PTA President for Pittsfield Elementary and Middle School. And first of all, I do want to thank everyone who has been moving very quickly and efficiently with making the situation that was brought to attention of there not being an SRO in the school. It definitely was a concern. I will say that I do not agree with how things were handled with the first two incidents that we had the beginning of last week. However, we have had multiple, multiple meetings with the Board and Dr. Hanlon, and we've had meetings with Captain Wilson, who is out there supporting us as well. And I think when we had our meeting last night, that there was extreme headway made. There is a plan. I don't feel that we've ever had to handle a situation this quickly, and a few decisions were hastily made. And I feel that they are owning those situations. I feel that the Board, City Council is supporting us. I've spoke with members, and I appreciate your time for that. I've also spoken with Executive Culver, Board members, administration at Pittsfield, and they realize there is a situation with what our plan is going to be. They are addressing the situation, excuse me, addressing that, and we are coming up with ways to prioritize situations. We are coming up with ways to make sure that we are following the code of conduct so that students are receiving an appropriate consequence. We also have discussed security, different safety, security councils, safety expos. All those things were mentioned last night at a meeting, which, believe it or not, actually calmed me a tad bit from what I had been last week. And I do appreciate the Kim Miles going over all of those safety coordinator ideas with us because I know Dr. Hanlon is a tad bit under the weather. A couple of other things, I know we have three minutes or less. We at Pittsfield are definitely pushing the "see something, say something." We do have some students who have clarified a few things with administration at Pittsfield, so we're hoping that that is going to give us a little bit more insight on how the situation was handled, and if it's going to, we are going to continue to be as informative as we have been in our school within the past five days. There was lack of communication in the beginning, absolutely. I would prefer to know from the administrator of the school that there is a threat opposed to receiving a text message at 4:30 in the morning. And that ended up causing more chaos and hysteria than could have been handled if a school messenger had been done and sent out appropriately and in a timely manner. I know that Mr. Cody is also working on some following up with bullying situations which may cause these things to occur and these threats. They are working on that. We are absolutely thankful that there is an SRO at the school. We have welcomed him with open arms. We gave him a nice Wildcat welcome yesterday. There also has been an SRO sign put up in the front of the building at the beginning of the year. Our administrator had all the signs out front taken down for parking. And yesterday, Sheriff Lewis contacted me and let me know that it was being put back up, that there is an SRO spot there. He also informed me that they did go to Willards and make their presence known there, walked all around the school, which was just heartwarming to know because I do have a child at that school as well. Mrs. Nicholson and Mrs. Rice at those schools are absolutely on board. They feel the support. Mrs. Nicholson had let me know that she had waited over an hour and a half for an EP situation to get an officer there. So, now with one right at Pittsfield, we're sharing with Willards and Beaver Runets. It's wonderful to know that. And I know you guys have talked about this situation. I am an advocate for the children, and safety is number one, and I will fight it to the end. I will fight for funding. I will fight for what we need to do to keep our children safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Dawn Tonner, and I'm a parent of two of the children in Pittsfield. And actually, I'm here because if I don't speak today, I'm going to hear it from a bunch of 11-year-olds who I'm here to represent today. Just to add on very quickly, some comments. These children are very tech savvy. I've been listening to the conversations since this whole ordeal, and the things that you hear from these children are just incredible. The fear of this incident, we don't want to go to school. You know, I've had to deal with my own children and the other friends. So, today, they've asked me, I am the representative for the bunch of 11-year-olds. I want to relay to you a little story very quickly. They have the SRO in. He had a drill. We got a paper that came home from school. The kids were just, could not stop talking about the new drill they did. So, they did a safety drill. And I said to my daughter, "Did you not do a couple?" And she said, "No, Mom, this officer knows the real thing." So, they were very impressed, and they said, "We're not going to hide under a table and pray." He showed us what other things we could do to defend ourselves. So, there's a difference between an SRO instructing, and they said it went very well, and the kids were very impressed. And my older daughter, who's a little, she said to me, "He's very professional, Mom. He knows what he's doing." So, they're welcoming him, and I hope that this is something that's going to be in the future, you know, that we have someone positioned there for our children, for their safety. And, you know, I don't know how we're working with these kids with their mental health. Even that threat was so traumatizing if you listen to these 11-year-olds talk. Just the threat of that in this day and age. They watch too much TV, too much YouTube. They know what's going on in the world. So, I'm here to represent them, and if I didn't, I would be hearing it at 3 o'clock this afternoon. They want to know what's being done. I told them, everybody was meeting, we were talking about this today.
Right.
So, that's where we are.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments? Any council comments? From President's comments, I would like to say that I was personally pleased with the Board of Education's response with the Pittsfield issue. I see so much more transparency than I think we've seen before in many years, and that was very refreshing. And I think the response was very good, not only with the Board of Education, but with the Sheriff's Department. I thought it was excellent. And I've talked to Superintendent Hanlon, I've talked to Sheriff Lewis, I've talked to some parents. So, I'm glad to see it's working out as it is. We brought it before the council today because I think it should be noted that Councilman Joe Holloway insisted that it be brought before the public, and I give him credit for that. He's 100% correct, as he usually is, but... Thank you. That's something we both agree on. So stretched. But I thought it was worth noting that Joe called me almost instant and says, "John, you need to open up," because we had a very huge, terribly busy work session, I mean, legislative session today. And Joe said, "You know, John, this has to be on the agenda." So, that's why we're here today, to discuss it, to discuss it. Also, during the week, visiting an early learning center, an invitation from the Board of Education. We really appreciated that. It was very eye-opening as far as how things are working along that line, especially considering the fact that pre-K is being strongly committed, as President Ashanti had suggested, as being very highly considered in Wycomico County. We also were at the Farm Bureau, as Councilman Dodd said, and enjoyed that. That was a really enjoyable time. Sorry I couldn't make Willards, but I think, Joe, you were there, weren't you? Joe represented us for the Willards Award Ceremony with the Fire Department there. I'd like to thank Public Works, Dallas Baker in particular, and Weston Young, and Lee Outten was there as well for all these meetings we've had trying to get stormwater management in order in Wycomico County. We're going to get it done. And we've learned so much from the public that it's not going to be an easy task, but it's achievable. And we're doing small, you know, small steps and setting up the guidelines. And what we've been doing over the last month or two has been, I think, absolutely phenomenal, more than we've ever done, I think, in the last several years to try to get this underway and to get the flooding under control in Wycomico County. So, I've been, the meeting's been great, and I think they've been very productive. Outside of that, President Ashanti had also mentioned the fact that they were having the public hearing on the budget. That's going to be on March 22nd at 6 o'clock at the Flanders Room. It's very important for public attendance at these events. Believe me, it makes a difference. This council gave more money at the urging of Matt Holloway. We gave more money at the urging of Matt for the Board of Education last year for one-time-only expenses. And I think that really came out of the fact that what we heard at the public hearing, we did listen to what the individuals had to say during that public hearing, and where we could fund it, we did fund it. So, that's all my comments.
I think the 22nd is also the night of the teacher's year.
It is.
And I'll be attending that, I'd already committed.
I will too.
Thank you.
That being said, entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, wait, hang on, I'm sorry. We've developed a new system here where I must read half a page of legal jargon. So, entertain a motion to adjourn from the legislative session, go into open work sessions followed by closed work sessions pursuant to the local government Article Section 3-305 B13 and 8 as follows, "To consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose to protect the county's bargaining power. To consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation to protect the county's legal position. To discuss a personnel matter to protect the confidentiality of the individual. In administrative closed session pursuant to Section 3-104 to discuss the county internal auditors' project updates." So, move. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? You oppose? Motion's carried. Meeting's been adjourned. First, open work session meeting we have is the Clean Energy Loan Program. Mr. Bill Chambers, how are you?
President, I have representatives from all sorts of agencies, Davis Simpson and SVN.
Will you just come up? You're supposed to be here. I'd like to thank you, Bill, for bringing the start. Attention.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the council, for, I guess, a few minutes to talk about the Maryland Commercial PACE Program. This is the acronym for Property-Assessed Clean Energy. My name is Bill Chambers. I'm President/CEO of the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce. PACE Program is an effective way for county governments to create jobs, retain businesses, keep dollars in the local economy without raising taxes, and simply by helping to make commercial properties more energy efficient. So, counties can leverage PACE for economic development. It can lower operating costs to help retain local businesses, improve the value of local building stock, reduce reliance on foreign fuels, provide more local jobs to keep dollars in the economy. The PACE Program was approved by Maryland in 2014. I think there's 14 counties that have adopted it now. And since property taxes are collected at the county and city level, the law requires that local ordinances also be passed to take advantage of PACE financing. The Maryland PACE Program allows counties in Maryland to enter into partnership with a state agency, the Maryland Clean Energy Center, and join a statewide standard PACE program at no cost to the county. The Maryland PACE Program works with the county to pass the ordinance, intake and approve PACE projects, train local contractors and capital providers, establish procedures to place PACE surcharges, and facilitate collections and remit payment to capital providers. My understanding, the PACE Program was something that council had talked about a few years ago, but there was not a project ready to go that could take advantage of the program. And we do have that project ready to go. It's at 132 Main Street. And there's also projects that SVN has identified that qualify for this. So, with that, I'll turn it over. You can talk about the project.
My name is Bob Greenley.
Bob, if I could ask you to get real close to that mic so that they can hear on the table.
Certainly.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Greenley. I'm the Managing Director of the SVN Office in Easton. It is in Easton that we have started assembling a group of professionals who can address all the different energy components of a given property. As far as we have in the audience, the gentleman who is handling the solar for this effort, named Doug Jurius. The PACE Program, as we understand it, addresses energy, including solar, plumbing, electricity, lighting, doors and windows, insulation. It's kind of everything that you can imagine that contributes to the energy expense of a given building. It's obviously of interest to SVN that we're able to present our property management clients and others the opportunity to not only manage their energy expense, but also, if they're interested, to green up their buildings. And this represents a great opportunity to do that. We do have a number of projects that we are looking at here in Salisbury. We have some that we're looking at in Easton. There have been some that have been done already in Kent County on the western shore. I think there's been quite a bit of this kind of activity. From my understanding, the basic mathematics are that the energy expense plus the real estate tax expense in the current environment, we, after this initiative using the PACE Program as a vehicle, will reduce the total cost. So, you're spending more money to get the energy efficiency in place, and then by quite a margin, reducing the total cost of the energy. So, I don't know that I can speak to this specific project today necessarily, but we do have some major buildings and facilities in Salisbury that are interested as we speak and hoping that this program can be introduced and moved forward.
Thank you, Mr. Greenley. Yes?
So, as I understand it from the county level, our involvement would be essentially we would collect the money. There'd be a surcharge on the taxes to collect the loan, to help repay the loan, basically.
That's correct.
I'd be interested in knowing what our Finance Director, I mean, what the thoughts are in terms of how that would work with the county.
I've talked to other counties, they're going to...
Yeah, Dawn, if you could use the mic for me. Yes, if you don't mind, I know. Thank you.
Dawn Parks, Director of Finance. I have talked to a few of the other counties. They have gone. The ones I've talked to don't have any businesses in place yet that are doing this. Their Departments of Economic Development are actually managing the applications. At that point, we'll get a list of properties. We would put them on the tax bills and collect the money. I'm not sure where the money goes from there. I haven't gotten that far. But as far as putting it on the property tax bill, there's not an issue with that.
So, you wouldn't see this as being a burden?
No.
The other counties, Councilman Kilroy, have adopted this. There's been no adverse fiscal impact to them. What it's done is just opened the door for more energy-efficient projects. I mean, the 132 East Main Street project, and I wish someone from Davis Simpson were here. They're going to be gutting the building from the second floor up to the fourth floor, and they're adding additional floors. So, they're going to create residential as well as mixed-use with that building. Two other projects that are identified are 1 Plaza East, a quarter of a million dollars for new energy-efficient windows, and City Center will also be putting new energy-efficient windows and an elevator in. That's a quarter million dollar project. That's a quarter million dollar project. The 132 East Main Street is a, is a three-plus million dollar renovation project. So these are all, I think, vital components. This is why the chamber feels strongly that this is something we ought to seriously consider.
Yeah, that is, that's a huge undertaking. And you can see with the costs that they're suggesting are going to be needed through this program, it's a big part of it.
Yeah.
Which is good to see.
So we just wanted to present this for your consideration, and hopefully we can look forward to a, some legislation that would enable the program to, to begin as a part of our, some things we can do to lure businesses to, to the county.
Well, we appreciate that.
If I could just add to one thought, the, the, one of the benefits of having the PACE legislation in place is that it frees up funds to flow through the program. So we have a heavy financing contingent as part of our group, also grants writing contingent as part of our group. So this would allow all of that to really happen. And the, the providers, they're in place already. This is really a vehicle that, that coordinates the financing, and then all this flows through it.
Yeah, I was, I was saying that I appreciate the fact that, I mean, this is a, I wouldn't have expected less, Bill. It's a completely inclusive package, including a recommendation on how the resolution could be presented. Mr. Taylor, I know that you have reviewed this as well as you do. And did you have any suggestions or recommendations on that end?
Well, just a couple thoughts, and I've looked at a couple of the other codes from the Western Shore in particular. The two counties, Montgomery and Baltimore, both have a upper limit to what the loan can be. Let me just read briefly if I can. The loan under this program basically shall be not more than 20% of the full cash value of the property or the appraised value of the property. And together with the outstanding balance of the mortgage or deed of trust, may not be more than 90% of the full cash value or the appraised value of the property. The full cash value is determined by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. The appraised value may be certified by a certified real estate appraiser, not more than 12 months before the date of the loan application. That's one thing that I think is worth considering. And it might be helpful to talk to those counties about why they put that in place and specifically what, what if any consequences have been. It doesn't have to be 20%, obviously, it could be some other number. In fact, I believe in one county, it's 10%. Just a couple of other quick thoughts. And I think this is already in the draft ordinance or resolution, whichever, that is in the briefing book. And that, that is that there can be any lender. It's not restricted to a one particular lender. And that's already in there. Just another kind of a housekeeping matter, doesn't really change anything substantively, but I think it's a good idea. In the proposed ordinance or resolution, it's, it defines a commercial property by what it can be used for. Now, that particular definition is out of the state enabling legislation for this program. And it's fine. I mean, it's, but I, but I would suggest this is another way to skin the cat, and they've done this in other counties, is to define commercial property to have the same meaning as what's specified in the state code. The reason for that is if the state code is changed, then it's automatically changed in, in the local program. So that's kind of a housekeeping matter. And I do point out that a county or a municipality, either one, can, can have this program. Doesn't have to be the county, in the case of Salisbury.
Okay.
Mr. President, just to dovetail on County Attorney Taylor's comments, good point on Montgomery County. I know that they put the cap there because there were several projects that were eligible that were in the 100 million plus range. So I think that was probably a, a big reason why they placed a percentage cap on that, given the, the scope of those kinds of projects in that jurisdiction, so.
Understood. Joe? And a few years ago, we went with a energy efficient lighting and heating energy project that was supposed to save the county a lot of money, and I don't think it worked out quite that way. Is, what kind of audit is done, is going to be done to make sure this is paying off?
The, the, the PACE Program incorporates all of those guardian elements into it. And there's information, I know on their website, I, I reviewed it, about the kinds of inspections and approvals that a project has to get in terms of meeting energy efficient needs, in terms of everything from the infrastructure to the actual appliances that go in, whether you're talking solar or other, other items.
But will there be any audits done after?
The state, yeah, the state does, under, under the Maryland PACE Program, which is under the Maryland Energy Administration, they conduct those.
One of the things that SVN is encouraging is a more comprehensive approach. So to isolate out lighting or any one of the energy features may not pay as well or pay back as well as a more comprehensive approach. That will be our, our initiative in, in this respect.
Any questions? I guess where we'll, we'll be going from here then, Mrs. Hurley, with what's, what's, what Mr. Chambers has presented and what Mr. Taylor would maybe recommend, try to coordinate some type of a, I'm assuming it's going to be a resolution that will need to come before us, or is this going to be, exactly how is this going to turn out?
I believe legal counsel is recommending legislative bill.
Legislative bill?
For this project.
As, as far as I'm aware, most other counties have done it by ordinance.
Legislative bill. Okay, great. So if you, if you could coordinate those efforts together with Mr. Wilder and get something substantial that can come back to the council, I would certainly want to review it with the gentleman here to make sure that we're not compromising this program. We look, we have to look out for the county's safety as well, understood, but at the same time, we don't want to compromise the program. We can find a, a good fit for everyone and then get it back here to us, so.
Certainly will.
That'd be great. All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is the public safety at Pittsville Elementary School. We have a number of guests here tonight, today, and we appreciate you taking the time to be here. Doing very well. Thanks for being here. Make sure you have a mic there, babe, if you could. You can take that. You got here first.
I know.
If you could state your names, please, your positions for the public. Thank you very much.
We'll see if this works.
Oh, great.
Don Handlin. Sorry, that's as loud as I can be. Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you.
I'm in the same boat. Don Fitzgerald, President of NY Comica County School Board.
John Palmer, we need you up here, please. So you can interpret to them.
I can speak loud where you can without a mic if you need.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Babe Wilson with NY Comica County Sheriff's Office, and thank you for coming up, John, so I don't have to do all the talking.
Tell them who you are, John.
John Palmer, NY Comica County School Board Member.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to start, and I'm probably not going to have a lot to say because I, no, you probably can't hear me. It's very frustrating for me because I feel so strongly about this. First of all, thank you, President Cannon, for saying what you said about transparency. That is critically important to me, and it's something that we work on every day. We, we sent the council information about the incident when it first occurred at Pittsville, and I followed up with you at the end of the week. Oh, it's coming in, I think. Maybe not.
That was the water.
Thank you. I'm good. At the end of the week, to give you some, to bring you some closure to what we had been able to find and to where we ended our week, as Mrs. Lewis said, things are, have smoothed out very, very well in Pittsville, working with the sheriff's office very closely. The board had, immediately following the board member meeting, we did make arrangements to have SRO presence. At that point, the very next morning, not knowing yet how we were going to fund it, but I spoke with Mr. Ford, my chief finance officer, before we even left the board meeting on Tuesday night about finding money, looking at our accounts. And we were able to do that within our SRO account.
Good.
So that we're able to fund it for the rest of the year. And as I've talked with Captain Wilson, we should be able to do the same into next year. So I sent you all an email. I hope you have that. I would love to go through it with you, but that may not be. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
You know, we'll try to answer. My voice is a little stronger than hers, but at the board meeting, you know, we heard from the parents loud and clear. So it was, you know, we as a board knew what we had to do, and Dr. Handlin followed up on it. And, you know, we need to hear stuff that, because we don't hear it all the time, but the parents need to talk. And we had a meeting last night, and Tanya was there with the parents from all the schools that could make it. And we assured them, you know, safety's number one. You know, there's stuff that's going to happen in the county. We're going around and checking every school. I mean, Dr. Handlin presented that last night through Kim Miles, who did the talking for her last night.
Right.
But we're committed, you know? You know, it's, it's the times now, but we're committed to make schools sure our schools are safe, so.
Thank you, President Fitzgerald. Captain?
Yes, again, I'd like to echo everybody's sentiments. You know, it's an excellent opportunity for the SROs to put the, to increase more for this year and as well as look to project for next year. Absolutely. Our school climates are number one, community safety. And each of our schools are communities. And with that, we have 15,000 plus students, 3,000 employees, and it's every day for 271 days that we're a part of. But throughout the school year, and even during the summer, you know, we have other resources that are in place to help during the summer school activities. So again, I appreciate everybody's concern and support throughout this process.
Okay. Thanks, Sheriff Lewis, for us as well.
Absolutely.
And John, I think I've told you before, you know, in years past, we had, the working relationship has not been here. It's here now, from everybody. And that's what makes this county so great, I feel, that we can work together. We might not always agree on stuff, but we can work through it. And when it comes to our children, there's nobody that's going to push that in this mindset right here.
We appreciate that, and we recognize it. We do. Well, we appreciate you all being here. One thing I see that seems, it almost seemed as if, from my perspective, it almost seemed as if the social media sort of exaggerated a lot of what happened and created the, and sort of, you know, twofold, threefold, and fourfold, turned this into a very mass hysterical type situation, which it's, it's great to bring it to the forefront and, you know, to, to, you know, to see follow up and, and, you know, action resulting from that. But I'm wondering if there's anything that we need to consider where you can create another avenue for the students or the parents to go to, 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 because the rumors were incredulous.
That's the problem with social media. And I think I talked to Larry before the meeting, you know? If the truth is put out there, that's fine and dandy, but rumor's not always truthful. And that's where it parlay's. And I think that was part of the issue, and I know Dr. Handlin has got some ideas on.
Do you? Would you like to tell us what they are?
Well, I have a long, a long list of safety initiatives that Tanya mentioned earlier, one of which is, is a very strong campaign about see something, say something. And I think the more that we can encourage our students to be responsible with information that they hear or that they see, and I will tell you, in this case, at Pittsville, those students did tell an adult. The students who heard something or saw something did do that. And that's how we were able to work quickly with the sheriff's office, because we're going to take every rumor out there very seriously. But unfortunately, even after that, there were just incredible rumors on social media as you and I talked about.
Right.
That were simply not true, and it's very difficult to control, except through our own communication.
Is, could there be any way to like to put up a Facebook page, like a true false Facebook page or something from the Board of Education, where you could, they can go on, they go, the rumor that a gun came to school the next day, false, with a slight statement, anything to that effect where people can go, you know how with the news and they talk about fake news, and then you can go online, you can go to a particular site that says, here's what everyone's saying, but here's the real story? Whether the Board of Education has that ability to possibly create some type of, a medium?
Right.
Just, just a thought.
We do have a website, and we have a Facebook page. We do post information, but your idea's a good one. We can consider that.
Yeah. It may help tone everything down a little bit when it gets out of control.
There was a, an incident with a, one of these social medias where Mr. Butler was able to contact the, the owner of the social media, and they have agreed that when an event happens within the Board of Education, that instead of putting up rumors or something that is not verified, that they are going to contact him first. And that is a very big step.
Good.
So we're looking forward to see how that's going to work.
But the biggest thing, and Dr. Handlin mentioned it, is the students. The students know what's going on. And in this county, in the high schools, in the middle schools, we got some good leadership. Prime example is the, on the 14th, for the 17 minutes, general public thinks we decided what went on. Wrong. The students of each school, student government decided. We have great leaders in all of them, and they're the ones that are going to help us out. It's not going to be you and I. It's going to be them, working with the authorities to make things right. And I know how I am, and I know Dr. Handlin's that way, zero tolerance.
Right.
Zero tolerance.
I think one of the biggest things, rather than going through my whole list of things that we're doing in terms of safety initiatives, is that we are working with the Maryland Center for School Safety, and we're going to be conducting, within the next week or two, an audit for school safety and security that will help us identify how we need to spend funding to, to, as someone's used the term, harden our schools to make sure that they are as secure as they can be. So that is a big step, I believe.
Great. Any other questions?
So as Mr. Brumley mentioned, the shooting in St. Mary's County, I briefly looked it up, and it sounded like the involvement with the SRO was significant. They didn't give many details, but they kind of alluded to the SRO response, so I can see the value of that. I was looking at your statement. You said in the last three months, there were different threats, or not last three months, in the last month was, I'm thinking, three weeks. Was that at Pittsville?
We've had a few others as well. The school principals have sent out messages to their school communities. Threat assessments have been completed.
Since the incident in Broward County, did the school have a, a school-wide assembly? Because this happened all over the nation with all these threats and several times throughout the state, did the school board have an assembly with the schools, teaching the kids that this is not going to be tolerated, the threats?
Did schools have assemblies?
Right.
It's happening in various locations in different ways.
But did it happen?
But yes, school administrators are working with their staff and their students. One of the latest, and it may have been what someone spoke to earlier, oh, it might have been Tanya who spoke about, or no, it was, I think, the other parent, sorry, who, whose child came home and talked about how this is, this is the real deal. This is credible. They may be talking about the Alice training, which is a new training that we, all of our administrators and one faculty member to this point has been to. And it's basically to express the idea, and I might let you do this, babe, actually, probably better for you.
Yeah, it's an orientation regarding how to respond to active shooters, and it changes the philosophy of the past. We've had quite a bit of discussion in law enforcement, as well as other communities and counties, and the responsiveness of law enforcement in the schools. And it, basically, it's a run, hide, fight philosophy, and it's nationwide. There are some hybrid programs that are out there also, but as she said, the Center for Safe Schools, Mr. Ed Clark, is allowing each, each local government to decide which way they're going to respond to their community needs in it. So it's at the infant stages, but it's definitely being pressed upon throughout NY Comica County.
I had a whole list of questions.
I had a whole list of questions. Mrs. Lewis answered a few of them about you guys beginning to work together to try to work things out, but the biggest question I have, and the one I'm having the most problem with, is you made a statement a few minutes ago, you had funding to do an SRO officer for the rest of the year, and possibly next year. Why was Pittsville left out in the first place? It was the only school without an SRO officer.
I don't have the history of that, but I can tell you that parents, especially after the incident in Florida, I had a teacher and a parent communicate with me, expressing the history that they've been asking for an SRO at Pittsville, and it was one of the things that we were gonna be considering when we looked at the audit. Probably, my guess is, it has to do with the school size, and, and the number of issues that are in a school. Again, I can't speak to the history of that.
Don's been there a lot longer. Can you, Don?
No, I can't. It's happened before my time with the SROs. You know, I don't know why the decision was made not to have one down there. I cannot sit here and answer that, you know, but.
I want to explain to you, though, why we have the funding. We have nine staff on our SRO, in our SRO ranks, and at the beginning of this year, we had two senior, probably wrong language, but two senior SRO individuals who left the SRO ranks, who were high-paid, and in place of them were two less experienced individuals. So over the course of the year, there's been a surplus that's been coming about, leaving enough to fund for the rest of the year, and as, again, as I indicated to Captain Wilson, that as long as when we backfill for SROs, or we add in additional SROs, as long as we keep that in mind, that we only have that certain amount of funding at this point, that we can add a tenth.
I feel guilty even asking you questions. Well, I think Dr. Handlin's probably the better one to answer, but I guess the other big concern I heard from parents was this student was allowed back in the school the next day. You know, there was rumors that he was in handcuffs, and I understand that wasn't true, and I'm gonna ask Officer Wilson here another question, but why, why was he allowed back? I guess it was a he, I really don't know who it was, but why were they allowed back on school property?
They were asked to come in with their parent to meet with the school administration, and hindsight, the timing of that was not good, because students seeing him in school caused more concern. So that's something that obviously we've talked to the school administration about, and that has been addressed.
Officer Wilson, is it Sergeant, or something? Deputy Wilson, I'll say that.
Yes, Mr. Holloway.
Was, now, the student was brought back to the school, so that was concerning to a lot of parents, and apparently the sheriff's office was involved on Monday night before. Was guaranteed there was no access to weapons?
I can't discuss the investigation itself, I can only tell you it's still ongoing, and regards to that, June information is confidential.
Okay, so, we don't know if he, we don't, we can't, we can't say whether he was or not. Okay. Okay. That's all for now. Somebody else, I'll probably think of something else, but, oh, I know, in your email to Mr. Culver's office, and then I see it in Mr. Cody's email, you said there was three incidences. Why wasn't, was, why wasn't the SRO issue addressed at the first one at Pittsville? You said it was at Pittsville.
To be quite honest with you, I wasn't familiar with the first one, and that's been addressed.
So the superintendent didn't know about it?
I don't believe, I don't even want to answer the question, because I, I don't have enough information, but I would like to think that's because it didn't rise to that level. I don't know that to be the case, but again, those kinds of issues have been addressed, because we have to take every single incident, as we did in the third incident, very seriously.
Would you be able to send us an email to that effect of what those incidents were?
I have to be very careful about student privacy. I mean, I can give you general information.
General, yeah, we understand, we recognize.
Is the student being disciplined, is that student at some point in time gonna be allowed back in Pittsville?
I can only tell you, again, student privacy issues, I can only tell you that we are administering the code of conduct to the full extent.
I don't think that answers.
I know it doesn't, I know it doesn't, but I have to be, be very careful about student privacy rights.
See, this is a problem that I think a lot of people are having, is the transparency of some of the thing, and I understand about your investigation, I don't have a problem there, but.
It's the law.
You know, the superintendent not knowing about a threat is highly irregular, I think. Now, another complaint I've heard is apparently some folks have invited Board of Ed members to the schools to walk-throughs or whatever, and the Board of Ed members have to get permission from the superintendent before they go? Is that correct?
No, I'd like to know, because administrators need to know, so that they can make arrangements for those visits, so that instruction is not disruptive.
I mean, putting a Board of Ed member just call a principal and say, I'd like to stop by the school.
They go through, they go through my office.
Do they have to go through your office?
Yeah.
And it doesn't stop anybody from going.
That's exactly right.
Pardon me?
It does not stop a board member from going to any school that they want to go to.
This board member said he might have known it wasn't an SRO officer in Pittsville, if he had have been there at one time or another, but, so.
Any other questions? Well, we appreciate you all being, yes, Mark?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think Larry and I, and Ernie may have kids in, in public schools, so this is, you know, something of definite concern to us. My kids are elementary schools, this, they haven't, you know, this doesn't immediately affect them, although they come and they talk about, you know, they, you know, the past couple days have had, you know, these drills and things like that, so I know there's more attention being put on that, and I do know that there have been steps taken over the past three or four years to make it more difficult to get into schools. I know as a parent, it's more difficult to get into school now, so hopefully, that's more so even with people that shouldn't be there. I do think that there is a need, you know, and I don't know how you do it with the privacy laws, and whatever state laws are a problem, but, you know, as a parent, part of the issue is you feel in the dark a lot of the time about what's going on in the schools, whether, you know, you know, there's, there's so much happening there, and then when you hear the rumors, and then, you know, the rumors travel much faster than facts and truth, and so I don't know how you do that, but I know as a parent, that's part of the issue, of you, you feel, you feel like you're in the dark, and, you know, all you have is this other stuff to believe. So to the extent that there can be better communication, better transparency, you know, perhaps looking at some, you know, as part of your audit, looking at some of these state laws that may prevent the sort of transparency and the sort of communication that you need to have with the parents, you know, maybe that should be part of it, and then talk to our state delegates and say, look, some of these state laws really get in the way of what we need to do to, you know, to make sure that parents have the information, and, you know, that, that we can effectively communicate, and we can effectively deal with even some of the discipline problems. You know, we've heard, you know, that concerns about discipline, that when students, you know, that the teachers aren't backed up, you know, we've heard that before, where, you know, students who are, who do cause trouble, may not receive the discipline that people think that they need to receive, and, you know, I remember I talked with Dr. Fredrickson about this when he was there, and he said, well, a lot of that comes down from the state, you know, we, our hands are tied on a lot of these things, and so it would be, it would be good to know some of these things, and, you know, there's lots of rumors and lots of stories about these things, but what, what can be done, what is a hindrance, and what maybe needs to be changed, but we need to advocate for change, so, but as a parent, you know, more information is good, and more communication is good, more transparency is good, that, that builds trust. We understand mistakes get made, and not everybody's perfect, but communication is, would definitely be a big step in the right direction.
Thank you, Council. Yes, John.
I just have.
Grab that mic, John, I know you're loud enough, but they say you have to have.
I just have maybe one more question. I'm curious about the history of the SROs in Wycomico County, and personally, we're, we're going to be looking into that, and what I'm really interested in is the funding for the, for this area. Does it always come out of the school vote, or school fund? Does it come from the county? Many of you have not been around long enough, except maybe Joe, and maybe you know how, in the past, how funding originated for the SROs in our programs.
I can.
Yeah. Did the original, did the original need come from the school, or was it requested by the county? Could you tell us something?
You're gonna tax my memory here a little bit. I remember it coming in front of us, and I believe the discussion, Babe, you were around, deputy, excuse me, you were around then, and I believe the discussion was whether the county would pay for it or the Board of Ed, and I think from the sheriff's office, it came down that it would be better if the money, you know, the taxpayers are paying for it in the beginning, no matter how, but the money would flow through from the Board of Ed, and that way it made it, you know, the SROs aren't there all year, they're, they're off in the summertime, so they go back to, you know, regular patrol or whatever. That way it'd be easier to differentiate the, the payments, as, as far as, is, am I correct? Yeah, that's, that's how I remembered it, and he remembered it the same way, so I was doing pretty good.
We can, we can, I'm sure Mrs. Hurley can sort of review what we have at our disposal to try to get you the information you might need on that.
That'll be fine, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, well, we appreciate you coming today.
Can I say, ask one more question?
Yeah, Joe, go ahead.
This, this mechanism you have for sending out about snow days in school, you know, it's a phone, automatic phone dial-up, can that be used in any way in this?
Yes, it is being used.
To dispel rumors also?
Well, as soon as we have the information. We are sending a parent message out to the parents of the school community about when an incident occurs, so we're doing that.
Whether it's credible, not credible, or, you know, you know, we're taking action or not taking action?
Yes.
Right, yes, are we taking action, or are we taking this out?
Joe, something came up on that last night about the contacting parents and all, and I believe it was Tanya who brought it up, about many parents are changing phones from one company to another and all, and we're having difficulty communicating because they're not upgrading their new phones with the information that we need to get through to them, so they're going to go through again to update that, but all parents, you know, please be sure you can communicate with the school.
Maybe a note in a report card.
Yeah, you were talking about the phone calls there. I think the, the issue is still happening in the public school system, where you have a father and a mother in two separate households, and only one phone call is sent out.
It's because they've not signed up, it's because they've not signed up for it. They have to sign up.
Dr. Fredrickson told me before he left that the reason was that they can only assign one phone number per child.
I don't think that's accurate.
That's not true. I get three phone calls.
Do you really? Yeah. I only get one.
Rumor shot down.
I've heard that from many parents, especially the father.
I hope when you get the three phone calls, Ernie, it's all good news. Well, thank you all very much for.
Hope you all feel the same.
Thank you. Entertained a motion from council, recess for a half an hour if we could.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
I'll second your motion.
Recession for half an hour if you don't mind. Thank you.